Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, August 26, 2024. I'll call the meeting order. We've got three items for discussion tonight. The first is a review of the City Hall beam replacement. And for this, I'll call in our Operations Superintendent Scott Williams and famed architect James Guerrero. And I think the sound has got quite a bit of reverb here. Is it too loud out there for you folks? Is it kind of crazy sounding or not too bad? Can you hear us okay? Okay.
Okay, good evening. My portion's going to be brief. I'm here to introduce James Guerrero, who has been working with us on what the report and our cost estimates and then conceptual what the conceptual ideas are for repairing and replacing the beams. So I'm going to turn it over to the expert and let him go through the proposals.
Great, thank you, Scott. So towards the end of last year, is that a little loud? Sorry about that. We were hired to take a look at the beams in the building here. So I put together a team with a structural engineer and a coding specialist. And we were specifically looking at the damage to the beams, but then also potential recommendations for upkeep for the beams going into the future. So we, in Scott's help, rented a crane and got up next to the beams that we could see damage to. So I'll describe those just briefly here. So looking down on the building, the left side is where the council chambers are. So this, we have a low roof and a high roof. So the low roof out here on the west side behind you has two areas of substantial damage to the beams, kind of right on the outboard edge there. And then looking at the high roof on both the north west side and and northeast side, there's damage, damage to the beams that are substantive enough that the beams are compromised. And so those areas, we need to do something structurally to resupport the beams. And so beyond that, there's several areas where the beams, you can just tell the finishes is wearing off. And there are some cracking and things that need to be addressed. But structurally, you have those kind of four areas that are identified that really need to be addressed. Just to kind of give you closeups of what's going on there. So the left picture there, you can see the, this is actually in the northwest corner. The upper beam is actually crushing the lower beam. So as we see on the left picture, and the right picture is actually a look through the beam. And you can see that that hole actually goes all the way through. So that picture is kind of showing you that the damage does penetrate through the whole beam. Again, a crushing section on the left there, on the right, that's the high beam. So you can kind of see up by the bucket there, there's a, the black hole is actually a bird hole. And then right below that, you can see what looks like a black stick. That's actually a screwdriver that's penetrating fully into the beam. So that's the condition on the upper beam on the west side. The east side, we couldn't get the bucket up to it, but the condition is very similar. So that's a picture of both the, from the north and from the south, kind of showing the damage to the beam that's perpendicular to the building, which carries the parallel beam, which is carrying the roof edge. So, so those are the areas that we're most concerned with getting repaired. Of course, you're aware that the the structural engineer recommended temporary shoring on this very northwest corner of the low, low beam, so that we don't have more damage to the roof as it deteriorates. So that temporary showing is in place. And so now we're looking at kind of the permanent fix for the, for the project. So after we prepared the report, we were hired to come back in and come up with some options to, as far as how to, how to repair or replace the beams. So this is just a view, kind of looking to the east and showing you kind of the areas of the, the yellow areas of the beams that are needing to be replaced. So that's just existing conditions. So we have two options that we looked at. The first option would be to keep the roof, the roof plane itself intact and all the perpendicular purlins, basically. Those are the smaller beams that are projecting out towards you. Keep all those intact, so the roof edge, the purlins, the fascia remain intact. But we cut off, shore up, cut off and remove the outboard, outboard motion beam for both the west low beam and the high beam on both the east and west ends of the roof, high roof. Shore up, cut those off, and then put a new beam in that's replaced back about four feet on the low beam and maybe a foot and a half to two feet on the upper beam. So in effect, the roof edge stays the same, the detail there stays the same. But the cantilever, if you will, gets just a little bit longer. So this particular option does the best job of maintaining the look of the building, but still fixing the structural issues. Option two looks at cutting both the, basically cutting off the beam in its entirety on the low roof, cutting back the roof, cutting back the purlins on the low roof and the high roof. So everything gets sucked back towards the building a bit. The challenge there is that in order to support the purlins, the purlins are actually, they, they break at the building line. And so they're not actually a cantilevered beam. And so we have to resupport the purlins at each purlin. And so the structural engineer came up with the details. It's a little hard to see there, but the upper left shows a little detail. It's basically an angle bracket that would go on each existing purlin. And then because the condition of the upper roof is a, structural condition is different, we had to come up with a detail for a little, kind of a little gusset to support each one. And so that would be the condition at the upper roof, both east and west sides. So that's the, the drawing presentation. I think there was some information in your packet about the, the cost estimating. But it turns out that from a aesthetic perspective, I think option one is the one that keeps the buildings aesthetic most intact. And it turns out that that actually is the, based on a, we had a, we had a professional estimator to give us numbers for both options. And that option one is the less expensive of the two. So with that, I would ask if there are any questions.
Questions of council, council member Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you had mentioned about shoring something up to avoid further damage to the rest of the roof. What kind of damage has already, has there been any damage to the rest of the structure due to these issues? Or is that something that we're just trying to avoid by doing shoring?
Right, so with the crushing, you can see that the, the roof edges is down a couple of inches. So each lamination of the glue lamb beams is an inch and a half, and it's crushed through the first one in the bit. So, so the roof has settled a couple of inches. That should be, we should be able to just push that back up. But as it deteriorates more, it gets harder and harder to do that without damaging the roof. At this point, we're, we're not expecting there to be damage to the roof by, by bringing it back into position.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Oh, oh, thank you for your work and your explanation and your, your documentation, even though it had too many numbers in it. The, I guess my question is between option one and option two, is there any difference between the two of them about future prognosis? In other words, will one solve the problem longer than, than the other?
So we're, we're proposing the removal of the damaged work in both cases and structurally sound solutions in both cases. So I don't, I don't perceive there to be any difference in longevity between the two options. I would say option one does, this graphic on the screen here does show the condition where you have the, the purlins projecting out past the roof. That's the existing condition, really around the whole building. That does leave the, leave the beams, leave the purlins more exposed. But they do have flashing and with proper treatment and proper maintenance, they should have the same light.
Okay, and did I read the, in the option one piece, I think, that just to make sure that I understood, we're going to take the damaged beam and we're going to cut it off some, somewhere past where the damage is. And hopefully the damage is where we think it is. It isn't when we go into it, it's not like a tree that's further in. And, but, but then we're not going to extend that beam. We're going to put a brand new beam somewhere to the east. And, and, and it seemed to say one to eight feet. I mean, is that, that doesn't sound that precise.
Yeah, so we, we're calling for it to be the, so the, the lower beam there, which is the one in blue, that, that graphic reflects cutting off four feet of the perpendicular beams and putting the, the blue beam, which is the new beam, back in, four feet back from the existing beam location. So we would be cutting off four feet of damage. We, we believe that that's well behind the damage, at least it's certainly behind the damage that we could see there. The, the upper roof doesn't have as much room to work with, doesn't have as much load on it either. And there, we're only proposing to cut back a foot and a half to two feet. So, so it wasn't one to eight feet, the lower beam, we are intended to be a four foot cutback. And then the upper one.
Does that come back in the roof itself too, in addition to beams?
The roof, the roof would stay intact.
So it's cantilevered over that much, huh?
Right, yes. So the, so this particular beam cantilevered quite, quite a ways out.
So is this work, when it gets done, similar to what they're doing on the bridge over on, on, on interlocken, where they're lifting part of it up so they can work on the things underneath and then setting it back down?
That concept is correct, right? So they do need to shore up the roof. So basically take the load off the damaged beam, so the roof stays intact. Pull that beam out and then put, cut the perpendicular beams off four feet back and then put a new beam back in at that level. So you do have similar, and that's just shoring, doing work and then putting the load back in place.
And then the, what sort of work needs to be done to make sure that the same thing doesn't happen to other beams?
Right, and so part of the original report, we hired a company called TM Coatings. He's a coding specialist. And he came in, inspected the damaged beams, but then also basically around the whole perimeter, we didn't get him up next to every beam, but up next to several of them, so he could evaluate the building as a whole. He does have recommendations for different, you have several different conditions in terms of soffits that have some, need some work. And obviously the beams that are well protected and then the beams that are not well protected. So he's, he's given us recommendations for all of those. And the estimate that we have does include repair and recoating the whole system. What I would point out, though, is that the design of the building is such that it, it really does need continuous maintenance. And so his recommendation is that you yearly have someone do inspections and, and hit any areas that, that have more deterioration, for whatever reason. And that every five years, you expect to do a substantive coding project.
So there'd be like a five-year preventive maintenance cycle for the beams of the building? And, and that, but that only applies to the exterior exposed beams? Or does it include beams inside?
So that program only applies to the exterior of the building. Although the reason you're having deterioration is primarily weather. So it's, it's sun and moisture that are, that are causing the issue. So interior beams, unless there's reason to suspect there's problems, I don't, I wouldn't expect a regular program to, to look at them for damage. But they certainly should be kept up, just like any interior spaces. So repainting on occasion, but, but you wouldn't expect deterioration, structural deterioration of the interior of the beams.
So one of the deteriorated beams is like there. And another one is like there. Okay, so, so given that we have to be in this building like every Monday, are we safe?
Are you safe with the current condition as it exists? Is that your question?
Yeah, is something going to fall in on us on Monday evening while we're?
No, it's not. And, and so the, the the damaged beams are actually, you, you can kind of see a beam just outside the window there. It's actually the next beam. But, but it is shored up now, so it's in a safe condition until we can do the repair. I wouldn't leave it that way for years, but it's, it's in a safe condition. The other beams are the ones that are on the high roof, which are kind of back behind us. And we do see deterioration, the, the span, the cantilevered span is substantially smaller than this lower one. So we, we didn't think it necessary even to do shoring on those. But again, it's not something you should leave for multiple years. It needs to be addressed from a structural standpoint. But, but there's not risk that the beams are going to fall on you this year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Laura Sella. Engineer to engineer over here, Mr. Guerrero.
Not that, not that kind of engineer, so I will try and stay within my lane. Thank you for coming in. Just, did we determine sort of the root cause of all of this as lack of maintenance or design flaw? Or how would you assess that if that was within your scope?
I would give it some of each. The original building, you can tell, has glue lamps all over. They're all shooting outside the building. They were not originally called out to be treated. And so the, the, you, you can do that outside a building, but if you do, it needs a lot of maintenance. It needs yearly attention to, especially if it's, if you're with a painter's stain to make sure that you don't get damaged. And, and so from a, I, I, I think from a design standpoint, they should have been treated beams. If I'm not mistaken, originally, they, they didn't have the flashing over the top edges of them. I think that was something that was added after the fact. And so they, both of those should have been original features to the building. And so then with that being the case, you have a building that needs a lot of, a lot of timely attention, or you're going to end up with conditions like this.
I understand glue lamps themselves are not the best exterior material, if not coated or treated periodically, correct? Which is amazing, the whole thing is a glue lamp.
Yes, and, and we, we do use glue lamps and on occasion use untreated ones. But it needs to be clear that you're, when you do that, you have the maintenance on it, so.
And so there's no protocol that, what's depicted in blue is the replacement beam. Could you do light steel? Would that be preferable? If it was painted, it's going to look like wood anyway, right? Any value in doing that to kind of have some permanency to these exterior beams?
You, you could do a tube steel. So normally just structurally there, it might be an I-beam, which will look different. And so you could replace the outboard edge with a tube steel. But I, I didn't look into that. I suspect that price-wise, you're in a different kind of area for the beam itself, yeah. And frankly, your building has hundreds of exposed glue lamps. So if you put another glue lamp back in there, but have proper treatment on it, proper attention to maintenance, it will last, in fact, that will last longer than the other beams, because it's, it's the new one.
Right, right. It's kind of like the bridge work we're doing. Okay, and they actually, they, they cut those back. They don't have to necessarily lift the roof up, or they do jack it up a little bit to be able to get the beam out?
They, they would jack it up a little bit, but they might actually end up cutting the beam out in, in pieces, right? So the, the challenge with this is that, that the outboard edge one is not too bad, although it's, you know, it's 20 feet in the air. The one that's really challenging is the upper one, because it's hard to get shoring and things out there. And so a fair chunk of the cost for it is, is these large cranes that they'll bring in to, to work with.
Very good. I assume dry rot is one of those insidious conditions here in the Northwest, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else? Scott, anything else? Afterwards, when we take a break, but not during the study session itself. It's hard, because then we open the door to all sorts of folks doing that. But when these folks are done, you can certainly ask them questions in the back, absolutely. Anything else for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, so in, in the packet and the information, talking about the, the coatings that'll be done as part of the program, the report kind of goes through a few different scenarios of, of the conditions where there's, there's plant growth, there's bubbling, there's cracking, all the stuff that TM coatings that they went through and described in detail. So that, that information is there, if you'd like to. If, if you don't have it, I can provide it to you. And then also the cost estimating is included. The proposed or, or the recommendation for the annual inspections and repairs, minor repairs, and then the five-year program. We do have numbers for that as well.
Two questions as a follow-up on that. So I understand from chat with a commercial coatings contractor that there may be a difference in longevity from a sealant type product as opposed to what we have currently as a painted, maybe an acrylic or maybe an oil-based stain. I don't know what was on there the last time. But is there a sealant type product that would encapsulate and keep water from having moisture intrusion issues? Is that called out in our spec for this option one?
So in the, in the report, TM coatings recommended using a high-density pure acrylic HDPA paint for this particular application. So it, it does have sealing qualities to it, but it actually was a paint. I think I might have, I might have misspoke on that earlier. But, but that's his, that's his recommendation to be the right product for this, for this job.
Mr. Williams, do you know what we've done historically? It seems to me in the 15 years I've been here with Mr. Branstadter and Deputy Mayor Moss and Mr. Bokey, we've done this at least twice. We've painted these beams at least twice. And I don't know if it was an oil-based stain that was used or what.
Yes, it was originally done during construction. It was done again in 2006. They redid it in 2013.
Right, I remember that.
It failed, and so
The 2006 failed, or the 13?
The 2013 failed. And so I don't remember if it was Don Wixstrom at the time or his predecessor. They dealt with, going through and getting the warranty work done, and they ended up redoing it in 2015. That was the last time the coatings were, were done.
Okay, it's been about nine years. And did they have any sort of warranty or recommendation on coating schedule back in 2014 or 13, when it was done the last time?
A warranty, I'd have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure. The, the recommendation from Public Works at the time was a 10-year program.
So there we are, yeah, right? Very good. Well, now are you seeking some consensus direction on option one or two tonight, Mr. Caffield? Or is this on a later?
So, I'm going to be forced either on consent or gender or otherwise, right?
Yeah, so mayor and council, this evening, what we're doing is we're briefing you on the two options. And our recommendation is to move forward with option one. So if council is good with that, what we would then do is we would go out and bid that. And then, of course, the contract would come back for your review and consideration at a later date.
So I'll just kind of go around the table. Are we good on option one as recommended? Yeah, thumbs up for option one. I'm, I'm thumbs up for anything that lasts longer than the next go-round, but it is what it is. It's a beautiful but challenging design for many reasons. Never would have designed it this way, not in the Northwest. So, but none of us were here. But thank you. It looks like option one is the recommended direction, and we'll go forward with that. Thank you again for coming. Thank you. Good to see you. And if you have an opportunity, if folks here in the audience have any questions to ask you, it'd be great if you have time. Thank you. Okay, next we have a review of our American Rescue Plan Act Fund, our status report. And for this, we'll have our planning manager Tiffany Spear.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what we're actually doing tonight is giving you as a council one more opportunity to review what has been done to date with the recommended obligations for the American Rescue Plan Act funds and providing you a couple of recommendations for several changes. Because we're up against the deadline of December 31st, 2024, to obligate all of the dollars. And then there are also a couple of time-sensitive issues that are in front of you for consideration. So. All right, so in your packet, there is a memo regarding the American Rescue Plan Act recommendations. And I'm sorry, I don't have the page right in front of me. It looks like it's early on in the, in the packet, though. Thank you, 38, immediately after the information that you just reviewed for the City Hall repairs. And what you see on the top of this page, I thought you were
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, August 26, 2024. I'll call the meeting order. We've got three items for discussion tonight. First is a review of the City Hall beam replacement. And for this, I'll call in our Operations Superintendent Scott Williams. Let's take a second here to get resynced as a record. Sorry to trouble you with the repeat of my voice. Are we good, Madam Clerk, on the record? Are you okay? Okay, thank you, Ms. Spear.
Sure. So what you see in front of you now on the screen is the memo regarding the ARPA program dollars. Just a reminder one more time, there was a total of $13,776,236 awarded to Lakewood in 2021 under the ARPA program. What has happened since is a number of motions and ordinances adopted by council to award the 40 or so projects, some of which are city projects, some of which are external organization projects. But in particular, there was a motion that was passed last year, 2023-55, in which the council obligated about $725,000 for Edgewater and Downtown Park creation. In which the council obligated uh about seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for Edgewater and Downtown Park creation or improvements. And then there was a proviso in that motion saying that any residual or leftover funds from a completed project. Would be automatically reobligated to those park improvements. So since then, about ninety thousand, eighty thousand or eighty nine thousand and change has been allocated to that. Um, under that motion so far, we're at about eight hundred and thirteen thousand under that motion to date. But as I said before, there's a couple of new um issues for council consideration before we get to the end of this year. First of all, Pierce County Village, this is something that the council discussed uh quite a bit last year. Uh, and even a little bit the year before. This is the county supported and Tacoma Rescue Mission. Funded and constructed project, if you will, for the uh permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless. Including some number, some percentage of homeless veterans. And at this point, it is in the hearing examiner appeal phase with Pierce County. Right now, we are not aware of any final solution for uh the hearing examiner as it. Both parties actually appealed the hearing examiner's decision. So the recommendation regarding Pierce County Village's allocation of a million dollars. Is that should we get to the point of December fifteenth of twenty twenty four, and for whatever reason, that project still isn't moving forward. That those dollars be allocated to the Edgewater and Downtown Park Fund. Regarding uh Edgewater and Downtown Park, I just mentioned this a little bit, but we're at about eight hundred and thirteen thousand seven seventy five. For a number of different items specifically related to Edgewater Park. First of all, uh property acquisition, and then there's been legal fees, a appraisal of the property, and then survey work that's been conducted. So out of the funds that have been allocated so far, all of them have been used on Edgewater Park and uh none to date on the Downtown Park. As you just discussed, there's the City Hall Support Beam Issues. And uh, just to cut to the chase, again, here, the city is recommending option one. And as a result, those dollars would come out of what would otherwise be going to uh the. Out of, excuse me, out of the residual funds, what would have gone to the parks, saying that we're gonna set aside uh what is needed. Uh, the difference between the currently available hundred and sixty thousand and the six hundred and eighty five nine fifty estimate. That that would come out of those uh dollars originally identified in motion twenty twenty three fifty five. So again, the recommendations is to uh provide, add a proviso to the motion regarding Pierce County Village's million dollars. That the residual ARPA funds, in addition to those that have already been set aside, would continue to go to the parks. Other than what's being recommended for uh two items, the Street End Pilot Project of five hundred thousand. And then three hundred and fifty thousand of that to the City Hall Beam Project. So I misspoke a little bit earlier, but taking out of the uh eight hundred and fifty thousand anticipated interest. Uh, that is uh collected accrued to date and then projected a little bit more. Five hundred thousand of that goes to Street End Pilot Project, three hundred and fifty goes to the City Hall Beam Project. And the remainder would would still go to the downtown and Edgewater Parks. So also included in here is a chart that just summarizes where we are to date in terms of obligations by uh the City Council. And then there's also uh at the end here, just a little bit of more math, sorry, Councilmember Ranser. But you see the total amount obligated and there's some left over, as well as the accrued interest that has not been obligated. By adding all of that together, you get down to the bottom of um obligating all of the funds coupled with the accrued interest as well. So happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
And then I'll open it up to everyone else. So if the Pierce County Village thing did not go through and we re. Obligated those funds. And looking at the bottom of page forty one. The million five oh four, is that including the million or would that be excluding the million possibly reallocated?
That one point five million is not yet allocated and does not include Pierce County Village. If you were to add that in, it would be two point five million that you would be um putting into different things.
That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Brand Center.
There are a number of other. Items on the list that had conditional uh allocations that uh. Have not been spent up. The the two largest ones, I think, are the two food bank. allocations, in other words, E F N has. They're allocated money to build a warehouse to do that. There was a uh an allocation. But that that then there is a another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that uh. Was conditional. What is that conditional on? And is is that move, how was that moving forward to actually being? Expended?
The emergency fu- Food Network and also Nourish Pierce County had provisional motions. Emergency Food Network has come and asked for their remaining funds. Um, they satisfied the uh. Proviso, which was to the tune of adding additional fundraising, which they've been successful at. Nourish Pierce County, they also have a provisional fund showing if they raise an additional million dollars, there's up to or. Excuse me, I'm gonna get the numbers wrong. Look up there. Thank you. Yeah, they've already received one million two hundred and fifty thousand. The remaining seven hundred and fifty was up to a one to one match if they raised that much funding. They are almost there, and so we anticipate uh releasing those funds before December fifteenth.
And so their deadline to to raise the seven hundred and fifty that we would match is which date?
It would also be December fifteenth, just to allow the opportunity for council to take final action before the end of the year.
Okay, I mean, you know, you know, I I I saw where they got a donation from Key Bank for a hundred and twenty five thousand. But that's not quite at seven hundred and fifty. Um, and is uh. Is is this something of where we have the option if we chose to extend the date? That the match would be available, but do something like we're doing with the Pierce County. Village of saying that if we get to. A date in twenty twenty five that they haven't secured the match. That they'll they'll go on uh, or are we? Firm with a. A date by. By a date in this year that they have to have a. Received the money to to be matched, or we have to reallocate it?
The rules under Department of Treasury is the city has to take all action it wants to take by the end of twenty twenty four to allocate funds. The Nourish Pierce County Communications we've received as at the staff level shows they are almost to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So beyond Key Bank, they have secured other item, uh other funds. Uh, so we're not concerned that they won't make it, but the council essentially would would still need to say December fifteenth. In order to be able to finish at taking action if it wants to by the end of this year.
But Nourish hasn't requested relief of of funds. Has they've gotten donations, let's say that they're at five hundred thousand, but they haven't requested any of the seven hundred and fifty yet. They're waiting until they get the whole seven fifty, or is our proviso such that they gotta hit seven fifty before they get a dime?
The way it is worded is a one to one match up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So if they get to December first, December fourteenth, and they're at whatever number, they could certainly ask for that if it's less than seven hundred and fifty thousand. We haven't received a request yet, but um the executive director is confident they will make the full seven fifty before the end of the year.
Okay, but 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 the idea was. We wanted them to make one request, in other words, so so if it's seven hundred and twenty thousand, because that's what they raised, like. And then in December, they would make a request for that.
The language is open, so they are able to do it how they would like. As of right now, they have not submitted a request.
Okay, and then just a smaller amount, the the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It was supposed to be, we were gonna fund. A certain portion of it every year, and the Rotary Club was gonna fund a certain portion of it. And that, um, but our expenditures so far are. Less than if you extrapolate them out, that we would actually expend all seventy seven thousand by the end of twenty twenty six. If we've only spent. What we've spent now, um, is 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 that uh? That program moving along well to include the. The enrollment targets of 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 numbers of young people?
I would say yes, with the communication we got from uh the Lakewood Rotary Representative. They did take a while to start submitting their invoicing, but they have done it. They are confident they will use all of the funds within the five years of the program. Uh, the way the city took action on that item, it is considered obligated. So it's not like there's a deadline this year that the council would need to take additional action to have that money sit there through the end of twenty six for them to use. And as um, from what I understand, since this program started, they continue to get new children enrolled. And so the speed at which the money will be spent is gonna increase as well.
Okay, and uh. I mean, I think that seems like that's a program that the Rotary at least is. Expend intending to continue beyond just the the initial five years. So uh, it it it'll be there, just we. If we're gonna continue to be a partner in it, we'll just have to find another. Pot of money to allocate some money for in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight.
Maybe the one percent monies that they could apply for, for human services.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And just following in the heels of Mr. Branson's question, so the three forty for the. Or three twenty for the reader boards. Do we have to have a provider contracted by the end of twenty twenty four for those to be deemed obligated? Cause there's not a nonprofit, it's us. So we have to, I think we have to get that finalized in a contract bid.
Yeah, the the council's action for a third party is to say, we have awarded you these funds.
Right.
There is a contract awarded. If you are doing services as the city itself, same idea, you've got the decision made through ordinance or what have you by the city. And then a contract would be um executed, but that does not, the work does not need to be completed. And in fact, the work doesn't have to be completed uh by the end of twenty six if you're awarding it and it'll take longer than that. Yeah.
But we do need to get that contract obligation going on that, so, okay, great. Any other questions? Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and thank you, Tiffany, for this presentation. I appreciate having contingencies for any sort of underruns that we have at the end of the year going towards our. Our council goals of Edgewater Park and Downtown Parks and uh lakes and parks access in general. As I understand it, we don't have to be super specific about what we're obligating this to. And I wonder if it might be more advantageous for us to say that the funds are going towards. Parks and lakes improvement, in which case they could be applicable to Edgewater Park, Street Ends, et cetera.
And. I think you would wanna be a little more specific than what you just said, council member. I think you would wanna say um. If you're not mentioning specific parks, at least explaining that it would be capital improvements, or it would be something toward Park X, Y, or Z. Um, in order to be able to say you have clearly obligated the dollars, but that can be adjusted if you wanna do that as a council.
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking for ways to give us more options down the road if we decide to divvy things up differently.
Councilman Bokey.
So a couple things that, the way I understand it. If we have stuff under contract at the end of the year and there are things that are supposed to happen, like the reader boards, let's say. Well, the reader board isn't a good example, but let's say um. Let's say it's the food bank thing. And it doesn't happen, we don't automatically lose the money. It has to be for a like. You can spend it on something, what's the, there's magic words, similar use or similar. Type or something like that. So if we found a. E F N wanted to do something, we could give it to them kind of thing, right? And and then the other thing, and I'm trying to understand, because we are being really specific with our. With our money. But every entity can take ten million bucks right off the top. Right, and for general government and spend it any way they want. So I'm trying to figure out how essentially we've already done that with. A number of the items that are on that list that you've got up right now, right? The retention bonus, although I think retention bonus isn't allowable use, but. I I I don't know, I'm not gonna break out the what's allowable use, but energy audit improvements may have been allowable use, but it may also be general government. Buying cameras was a general govern, I would consider that a general government function. Under our ten million, but I I see us that we're well below that. Is that? So I'm trying to understand how the specifics that we've talked about. But it's for parks and whatnot fit under that ten million umbrella.
Well, I will attempt to answer, please, um, if I start to ramble too much, stop me. Under ARPA, the city was awarded over ten million dollars, and so up to ten million could be claimed as what was called the standard allowance. And that meant it was basically less reporting requirements. It was you are a general government, we are gonna support you by providing you these funds. And if it is something that you would have done without COVID ever happening and whatever tax revenue coming in, um, you are good. And so the city has claimed some of these projects that are city projects, and actually some of the projects that are to the third parties. Also qualify as something that would be a general um government operation, meaning you would have provided dollars to. It's gonna be a bad example, but Dolly Parton as well, even though you didn't have the ARPA money in pocket, if you hadn't had the negative effects of COVID. So you do have all ten million already claimed under the ARPA reporting process. Um, if you come to a point come December of twenty twenty four. And you end up after that fact with either a contract is terminated because it's not happening for whatever reason. Or there's less funds spent than anticipated as of right now, those dollars can be transferred to. As Councilmember Bokey says, a similar type, and I know that's not the right term either, but um you would. Within the guardrails of how it's defined in the program, there is the potential sometimes to transfer it to us uh another project. So there may be a year from now, another conversation going on with uh telling the council. Energy audit went under budget, so we can transfer that over to something else to do with City Hall. Or um, we adopted this uh amount of money for the urban forestry project or program. Something has happened where we suddenly got another grant, so we can use these dollars for something else in the parks again, because urban forestry is trees. Trees is parks, those types of things. We'll just have to be really careful and make sure that we're following the uh regulations from the feds.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Spear. We appreciate the update and we look forward to making sure that we appropriately utilize the funds. Consistent with applicable law. So she's getting set up for the comprehensive plan periodic review. If we're ready to do that, we can do that. If you guys want a two minute stretch break, we can do that too. You wanna just plow forward? Alright, we're plowing forward.
Alright, uh, so you have, once again, the entire packet of the twenty four comprehensive plan package. In uh tonight's materials, and so that's the attachments that you see listed there. The actual comprehensive plan changes, the new Tillican Woodbrook Subarea Plan, changes to downtown and station district plans. Uh, then an audit table that walks you through what changes and why. Same thing in the development regulation side of things, all of the different titles that are affected, and then an audit table for most of those changes. Then you do have also the technical uh memo regarding why the city is holding the line on. How wide of a buffer would be on fish bearing water bodies in the city? And then the last thing is the attachment that talks about the proposed change in location and minimum size. For the master plan developments within the downtown. Uh, but the other information that's available in this. Are reactions to some of the public. are reactions to some of the public comments that were received at last week's public hearing. First of all, tree policies and regulations. There were some comments that were provided, I believe, both in writing and in person from the Gary Oak Coalition and Ms. Christina Manetti. And some of it was questioning why there wasn't an inventory completed of the trees in the city and how can the city be regulating what it doesn't know, when it doesn't know what it has. And then there were also some questions regarding Oregon white oak woodlands or savannas. And after some internal conversation about that, we have a couple of things in here for you to consider. First of all, just to remind the public as well as council, we do have a tree inventory ongoing right now. Facet Northwest is literally out walking the streets right now doing a tree inventory. It will be completed before the end of the year and we will be bringing information to you when there's time on the council agenda about that. But that is the foundation for the urban forestry program that we were just talking about. And secondly, after taking a look at some of her comments regarding the draft language in our critical area ordinance, which is Title fourteen of our code, we've actually recommended removal of some of the definitions in order to remove the confusion that she voiced. Because until we have the results of the inventory, it doesn't make sense to have these definitions included. Because there is not a complete tie between the definitions that were included and the regulations as they read. So we're saying, don't change the regulations so you have the results of the inventory. And as a result, take these confusing definitions out until we have the inventory as well. So the vast majority of the title is left unchanged, but we are recommending removing a couple of the definitions.
I'm not sure I understand.
Sure.
That.
There were two definitions, and it's the priority Oregon white oak woodland and then savanna. And then there was repeated references to savanna in particular in the proposed chapter. However, there wasn't the full, we have a woodland and this is how we're going to regulate it. Or we have savannas and this is how we're going to regulate them. And we're saying, take the definitions out until we're ready to make changes to the substantive regulations, which is all waiting. Right. And so wait until the inventory information is available and then we'll come back to that, whether it's in twenty five or twenty six.
Got it. And just a quick comment for the record on the public comment about the citywide inventory, I think the commenter was suggesting that we do it beyond just public rights away. She was suggesting we do it for all city parcels, public and private. And the inventory going on is just public rights away, city parks, other large parcels owned by public agencies, right?
Yes, and so it's the city public right away for sure. And then there are the parks that are owned by the city, but there's also the county park, for instance, Sealy Lake Park. And there's also the large campuses for the various schools and the school district. The other thing that is happening is, as best as the Facet Northwest people can do is either LiDAR or GIS tracking of tree stands on private property. So it's not going to be as complete or as detailed as the walking that they can do on the public parcels. But it is going to be a citywide analysis that will supplement. If you recall, there were maps created of the tree canopy a few years ago. This will be much more detailed than that. And we did not, for instance, go knocking on people's doors or businesses' doors and say, can we walk your property? It was instead, let's look at GIS data that's accessible and the LiDAR data that we can produce.
I don't think we want to put anything about inventorying things to some level of detail that's quite frankly, not doable. You know, things have to be practical in what we can do and we should. And we have very, very direct responsibilities for the trees that are on public property. So a more detailed inventory of those as opposed to a citywide inventory makes good sense to me to be able to go and do that. We also established some goals that related where the measurable element was percent of canopy. And that's, that's an inventory of sorts, okay, but it's different than what we're we're doing because it doesn't relate to species and things to do that. But I think that we're, the draft, I think, maintains that that particular goal of when, of getting to that that level of tree canopy to be able to go and do that. I think if there was a something in the draft plan that I would be wanting to look for something more specific, it would be around the policy to try to particularly increase tree canopy in areas where the canopy is below fifteen percent. Or, you know, because we've talked about increasing the overall canopy is fine, but we, there does need to be some other sort of look at the neighborhoods that tend to be low-income multifamily neighborhoods that have a much lower percentage of canopy. That maybe needs different strategies than this, than a strategy that would get us to an overall citywide canopy goal. But none of that has to do with this tree inventory that the comments were there to be able to go and do that. Quite honestly, our biggest thing about the trees that is going on has to do with the trees we don't have and need. That will, that will, that will, that will go on. So I, you know, I agree with the recommendation about taking the definitions out where you're defining things that you don't know to the extent that you have them. Okay, and so you don't really know how big of a problem or things that you need to do with them, and that makes sense to me.
Great. Any other comments on that point or questions?
The next item that was mentioned in last week's public testimony was a request from LRI to Resona parcel from at least in part or in whole, Air Corridor One to Industrial One. This is a request that did miss the twenty twenty four process up to last week and also missed the public call for the twenty twenty five docket. And where it sits right now is the city is recommending against incorporating this in the twenty four package for several reasons. First of all, there needs to be per our city code and analysis conducted on any comprehensive plan amendment, including rezones, to make sure that it is consistent with the plan policies and et cetera. But there's also a need to provide public notice to neighboring properties. And at this point, there's not time to do that prior to scheduled action date by city council. However, there is no resistance at this point from the city regarding the request substantively. So what we have communicated to the people who provided testimony was that the way to do this that the city would recommend at this point is go to the Planning Commission, actually next Wednesday, when they start looking at the proposed docket for twenty twenty five, incorporate it there, and then that will be in front of you for action before next June. So it's a roughly seven, eight-month process, and then it would be completed within that regular annual cycle.
Just on that particular point, this, this is, this parcel zone, what, AC one currently?
Yeah, Air Corridor One, in order to fit just the definition of a three thousand by three thousand corridor, it splits a couple of parcels.
Got it. And this intended use by LRI doesn't fit within AC one, I assume.
Correct, correct. Anything else there? Okay. The last one that came out of last week's public hearing is how much goes beyond the minimum state law requirements? This was a question from Councilmember Pearson. Generally speaking, the approach has been from the start to really answer the minimum state requirements. There's not been a lot of, or any of, hey, this seems like a good idea, so we're going to go above and beyond the recent changes, particularly related to housing. But what you will see is the optional subarea plans in and of themselves, those aren't required under the GMA. Secondly, the energy and climate change element, which was adopted in twenty twenty one originally, that predated any requirement to have that. And we are now in the process of updating it per state law that has changed since. Third is the, at this point, direction to allow short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units across the city. The state law allows the city to prohibit them. And the recommendation twice now from Planning Commission to the council is to allow them. And then the other way to take a look and see what's either following state law strictly or not would be to take a look at those audit tables for specific items. And if there's any other questions that I can answer at the next study session, happy to do that. But that's the response that we have regarding that question.
Any questions on that? No, very good.
All right. So if there's nothing else from me, I'll just sit back and see if there's any other questions regarding this topic overall.
Mr. Bransdner.
Well, allow me to say that I'm appreciative of the format that this is being fed to us. Particularly the fact that there are the audit tables, which really look at the things of where there's a change and the thing over there and that there is, you know, the actual change as well as original wording is there, being able to go and do that. And there's a rationale. Across all of the areas generally, there, I just had two comments regarding the rationale piece. One is that there's a frequent rationale is to one of the reasons for some of the changes is to comply with recommendations from the Department of Commerce, which is not that specific. And on some of those, maybe I'm not concerned about, but others I'd really be interested and I can sort of perhaps provide a list of what is it that Commerce actually recommended to be able to go and do that? Again, this is, this is this is our comprehensive plan, not Commerce's comprehensive plan, even though they will behave like it is when we send it to them. But, you know, to say we changed it because Commerce recommended it is not real transparent from us to the community as to, you know, what was the recommendation and maybe a little bit of clarification about why we agree with it. Okay, you know, other than the fact that Commerce recommended it, it's not, in and of itself, a good idea. The second thing is that I looked going back more than a year, when we were first starting on this journey of doing this, this twenty twenty four update, that one of the early things that we got from the consultant that we hired and that was presented to the council was a list of and I seem to think it was like a couple of dozen policies that the consultant said needed to be reworded because they were inconsistent with diversity, equity, and inclusion concepts. And I have to really go back to finding that, but it was, it was in one of our agenda factors that was there, being able to go. But I didn't find that rationale listed in the audit table for any of the changes in wording that we're doing this because of that reason or in part because of that reason. I know when I read the list back in twenty twenty three, I had trouble on some of them seeing what was wrong with the way it was originally worded, okay, as to why there was a the consultant thought there was a DEI issue with the way that we, that we had it wording. And I didn't necessarily, we're making enough change than to just make changes for the sake of change. So, yeah, 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 I'm wondering if we could take a look to see what changes are there, where the changes are because of or influenced by wanting to be more sensitive to DEI concerns or perceptions. I kind of thought that you know, that that is, while we have a commitment to doing that, I also didn't think we needed to make a lot of changes because I didn't think at a policy level, the city had a lot of discriminatory policies in there to do that, even though I think the consultant sort of said, well, somebody might interpret it that way. Well, it's how are things interpreted, but it's also how do we apply them? And I do think that we, I can't think of any particular policies that we have had, that we've been applying, that were significantly contrary to DEI principles. So I just sort of like to go back to that list or they decided that that really wasn't a consideration and we didn't do things for that reason.
Any other suggestions or feedback? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I don't have any questions from Ms. Spear, but I've been noodling for a little while and I'm going to work with staff to try to come up with some language dealing with shorelines and in no net loss. And so right now, there's I have two, two things working, retain current and future city ownership of shorelines and shorelands and adding a little bit under enhance and protect water quality to include through retaining current and future city ownership of shorelines and shorelands. So I'm trying to get the wording right and trying to find where those will fit in the in the, but when we get to the amendment phase later, September, October, those are two of the things I'm considering moving forward.
Okay, very good. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the topic of shoreline, so and I don't know if this was critical areas in general and how much is shoreline, but there's there was a number of sections that were stricken out about maintenance. One was like maintenance of roads and different things that was Xed out. And then I don't know if that was and I could be missing parts of it. Is there still going to be, you know, if someone has something built, it's lawfully permitted, they can maintain it without having to get permits if they're in the shoreline jurisdiction or do you have to always get permits or are things not allowed if you're in the shoreline or I think it was in the first part of fourteen, so the, like the general critical area. I don't know if it was specific to a certain type of critical area, but is there any changes to what's going on there as far as maintenance?
I have a feeling what you saw was a relocation of code language as opposed to eliminating it. Because for sure in the shorelines, the regulations are getting tighter, not looser. So let me verify that, but if I'm remembering correctly, there was some relocation of code.
Okay, and then I know things are getting tighter, but everyone keeps yelling about the same issues and why can't people remove blackberries and noxious weeds and stuff? Is there anything we can do to allow folks to be able to maintain, you know, shoreline particularly or critical area, you know, it could be mostly, I think it's mostly shoreline, but like, you know, what can we do to provide guidance or specific things that people can do? Or is that just, either way, you're coming in and getting a permit and you're having to do, you know, restoration or whatever?
Let me take a look at that with some other staff and bring something back for the night. Could do that.
Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Bransdner?
Well, along the shoreline property that, first of all, I really agree that the intent of Mr. Bokey's looking for us to have a policy of no net loss is a good one, but I think that it should extend to both things that are in our ownership. one, but I think that it should extend to both things that are in our ownership and things that we have easements for, because we have a considerable amount of easements, particularly in the wetlands of, along Flett Creek, where we didn't actually buy the property, but we acquired easements from property owners for, for some reasons to do that, but, but essentially keeps them from being developed and keeps them to do that. So that's just another thing. The, the thing that was, there was some confusion, and I talked to a couple of people who were trying to understand. People sort of looked at the shoreline management program and it dealt with waters of the principal lakes and of the things to be able to go and do that. And they didn't recreate, didn't immediately tie them to the critical areas ordinance with, dealt to some other bodies of water and wetlands. And that it, the language isn't clear as to what happens at the confluence of those two types of things. For instance, there is a different setback requirement for Ponce de León Creek than there is for Lake Silicon, but how does that affect the properties that are right at that confluence of where that occurs or that the confluence of Flett Creek with Chambers Creek and a number of other of those? You know, you, you end up with a cross hatch thing over there where the setback requirements are, are different. And, you know, I would think that where that exists, we would, we would want to use one or the other, maybe the smaller, to be able to go into it. Or at least some clarifying language as to how that situation would be applied for parcels that are impacted by two different setbacks.
Any thoughts on that?
It's something we can take a look at and again, bring potential language back on the ninth.
Okay, very good. Mr. Bokey, did you want to circulate some language at some point in the next week or so, or? Okay. Very good. Anything else from Ms. Spear? Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up, have you, what's the verdict on the 180 per short-term rental permit? Is there any, did we hear back on why that came out from Gig Harbor? Or is it still, is that still staff recommendation is with one, one permit per person or owner or whatever it is?
Yeah, I spoke to the staff at the City of Gig Harbor and their response was that was put in because of a concern for essentially people that don't live or own a business in the city, having multiple parcels with a short-term rental on it. And that hasn't come to pass to the level that was concerned. There's been maybe three or four, from what I understand. So it's not a strong recommendation from the city to you to keep it at one. And the idea would be maybe it goes to three, something like that. You've got a number. Yeah.
I think the intent there was to avoid the challenge communities around the country were seeing with institutional buyers, right? They would come in and swoop in, buy up properties and then eviscerate the opportunity for young, single family or single, one-time home buyer, not one time, but first-time home buyers from getting a leg up in the market. So, yes, sir.
Yep. And then one follow-up question. So I kind of keep having a hard time wrapping my head around this one. So if, if you, if there's a parcel in the R1 or R2, any, I guess nearly any parcel, but it would be big enough that you could build multiple units on it. So if, if someone is going to propose doing low-income housing, they get bonus density. Is that, so you have a lot in the R1 or R2 with the bonus densities for low income and the 280s, how many units total can be on a parcel?
That is going to depend on, A, the size of the parcel. It is the square footage that's going to dictate first and foremost. Secondly, so to keep going on that, if you have a 25,000 square foot parcel in the R1, that's the minimum lot size, you're going to get maybe two units on that lot or two units plus 80s, because 80s don't count toward the minimum. However, if you have a 50,000 square foot lot within the R1 zone, you would have more units allowed because it's then dictated by the size or number of units per acre. The other thing that's going to limit that is the presence of critical areas or their buffers, because there are limits in the regulations where if that's present, fewer units are allowed. But it is really going to be a case-by-case analysis.
Okay. So generally, you know, if you have a third of an acre, like it's like a half-acre lot, you could have, you know, maybe two units and 280s all on the same parcel?
If the square footage for that zone that you're in has been met, the minimum square footage, then you start looking at the number of units allowed. And so whether you're in R1 where it's that 25,000 square foot minimum or some of the others where it's less, it's all going to depend on the zone, the size of the lot, and then whether there's critical areas.
Okay, thanks. Very good. Anything else? Going once, going twice? I think you're off the hot seat for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. So you do have your second public hearing next week and then another study session the week following.
Well, very good. Again, it's a lot of work and we appreciate your very thorough work on this on our behalf and on behalf of the residents. So those items tentatively scheduled for the September 3rd, 2024 regular city council meeting include a couple of proclamations, as you'll see in your agenda packet tonight, a business showcase and a number of items. So we will now turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coughfield.
Good evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, council members, just a couple of updates for you this evening. The first is fresh off the press, learned about 4:30 this afternoon that Camp Marie after doing, doing their due diligence internally and briefing the new tag on her desire to have an MOU to develop a master plan for additional and improved larger access on their property to American Lake, as well as running it by a couple of other state agencies. They have agreed to do that, so they're going to be signing the MOU. So we're going to be, I didn't think that would be that popular. All right. So as you know, this has been over a year in the working, working with them, and then actually it goes back probably even longer than that, about 10 years.
Long time.
Maybe even longer than that. So, but I do want to recognize Jim Baumgart, who has been serving point for Camp Marie on, on, on this particular issue and helping move it along, as well as of course, the previous tag, Major General Doherty, and the current new tag, Brigadier General Welch. So we'll get that moving forward. And I know Mary Dawsworth and her team, our Parks and Rec Director, are excited about beginning that master, master planning process. Will probably get underway later this year, but more likely in the early part of 2025. And then just from a calendar standpoint, you know, just a friendly reminder that tomorrow evening, what, 6:00, 6:30, or even earlier, LPD will be out at the farmer's market and the concert, really just out there celebrating their 20th year anniversary as a, as a police department. As I like to say, the best thing that this community did in 1996 was form up as a city, followed very, very closely by 2004 by creating our own police department, which really allowed us to address, you know, staffing and positive policing in an urban suburban environment. And of course, the proof is in the pudding there in terms of how crime rates have decreased significantly since 2004 with the advent of LPD. And their great work continues on a day-in-and-day-out basis. Later on in the week, on, I think it's Thursday, no, Wednesday, the 28th, Congresswoman Strickland is going to be having, is going to be celebrating a ribbon cutting of Pierce Transit, Transit Bus Shelter upgrades throughout the community. And they're going to be doing a little event over at the one across from the Walmart on, on Bridgeport. And you folks are all invited, so if you have an opportunity to go by and just say hello to the Congresswoman, I'm sure she would appreciate that. It is...
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, 11:30 a.m.
Yeah.
It's a Pierce Transit event. However, since it's within your city, you folks have been invited to that.
I am actually presenting, so I'll be there with the Congresswoman for that event.
Then on Thursday evening, back at Fort Silicon Park at 6:30, this kind of new community outreach that we're having called Desserts on the Driveway. And even though it's not in a driveway, conceptually.
It's Thursday, right?
It's Thursday, that's correct. 6:30 at Fort, the Fort Silicon Park picnic area. And then we'll have two more later this fall, one on September 18th at the Silicon Community Center and another on September 24th at the former Lake City Elementary School site. Also a reminder that as we move into September, first of all, next Monday is a holiday, so your regular council meeting will be on Tuesday. But also on September 7th, Saturday from noon to 6:00, we'll have our second annual Fiesta de la Familia event at Fort Silicon Park. And we'll be having a distinguished guest again this year from the Mexican consulate. September 11th, as I reported last week, we'll have a memorial service, however, it'll be done in the evening. And again, it'll be done in partnership with West Pierce Fire and Rescue and will be done over at their headquarters building where they have the memorial and recognition of the 9/11 remembrance. September 12th, we're going to have our annual volunteer recognition event down at the pavilion. This is an opportunity for the council to thank all of your community of volunteers, to include your boards and commissions. That's going to be from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. The pavilion at Fort Silicon Park. And then we'll finish up September outside of your regular study sessions and regular meetings with a special legislative retreat on Monday, September 30th.
Can't wait. That's what I, that's our fifth Monday, right?
Yes, the fifth Monday.
Great, we're making use of it.
So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Coughfield? Mr. Brandstetter?
Is there an update from the shooting yesterday evening? The chief sent us an email about a shooting in a mobile home park and said there'd be an update, but haven't had one.
So it occurred outside a mobile home park? Don't know if it actually, mobile home park or the residences involved. We do know that it's an isolated incident. We don't believe there's any danger to the community at large. I think they also believe that perhaps it's in relation to another incident that occurred elsewhere within the county. But long story short, it just, it remains under investigation.
Okay, but the individual in critical condition is still alive?
So I saw a TNT article that said that one individual had passed, but I haven't received any official update on that.
I see. Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Coughfield? Do we have status update on any demo over at Edgewater?
I'm sorry, say again.
The status of the update of the demo project on Edgewater.
No, I'm not offhand. I will say those types of contracts, it just takes time to go through. And I believe there's also asbestos remediation that needs to occur as a part of that, but I'll try and get an update for you for next, next week, Mayor.
Very good. Okay, let's turn to council comments, mindful that we do have a brief executive session. After that, I'll announce that after we're done with council comments. So let's start with Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here, last weekend on Saturday, I went to the back-to-school event hosted by Maverick Gaming, and that was my first time doing that. So we were out there, I guess they didn't have enough, as many volunteers as they had in the past. So we were, had an assembly line filling backpacks there on the, on the curb. So that was, that was pretty fun. I think the first hour, there was like 150 or 60 backpacks filled and given out. So that was pretty awesome. And then I also got to tour their renovated, the Palace Casino there. And it's really, it's really pretty cool if you get a chance. I think it's 18 and older, but they kind of modeled it after like a Dave and Buster's style. So there's some card tables, there's a whole, it's a, you know, it's a really nice sports bar, all kinds of TVs. They, they host all of the, the main like fighting events and football and stuff like that. And then there's all kinds of like Dave and Buster, you know, arcade stuff in the other corner. So it's a pretty cool adult hangout. So if you get a chance, swing by. And then on Saturday, also went to the youth council kickoff, and that was fun. Seeing them, you know, being able to interact with the, with the youth council, and we had some team building exercises. And I feel like the rules weren't quite as clear on how high to stack the marshmallow, but I, I, I wish we could have a redo on that, maybe next time. So, but it was, it was a good event, lots of fun. I think there was, I was speaking to, I can't recall what her name is that, that runs it, but there's like 42, 42 people in the youth council now. And I guess it's grown quite a bit over the last five, six years. So, and I think there was about 25, so 26, eight of them there on Saturday. So it was, it was a good event, good time. I unfortunately won't be able to attend the Pierce Transit thing on Wednesday. That's the first day of school, so I'll be out to lunch with my kids. But I do plan on attending the desserts in the driveway, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Pell.
Thank you, Mayor. I too plan on being at the desserts in, on the driveway. It's a different little name, so at Fort Silicon Park, I think that will be a great first kickoff for that. And also just wanted to tell everyone to please be safe, because it is the first day of school and so the kids are out, and that's this Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things, enjoyed farmer's market last week, smaller crowd due to the weather, but it was still great to see people who turned out. On Saturday, I attended the Hilltop Neighborhood Street Fair in Tacoma, and that was, that was really cool. There were a lot of people that showed up from across the region, met a couple of Tacoma City Council members and had some good conversations about climate change with them. I will echo what folks said about being safe out there, identifying that there's going to be kids out going back to school. So, so drive safely and slow down a little bit. On Wednesday this week, I was invited to attend the Select Committee on Homelessness hosted by Pierce County, so I will be there. We, it was two weeks ago in our study session, we talked about, our Councilmember Brandstetter mentioned an idea for the street ends, like an adopt a street end type program. And I, I really like that sort of vision and something that I think could be a low-cost option for the city to work with our community groups to, to take on some of that sort of responsibility. So I'd like to look into that more and understand more of it, including what it would take to have what I like to call a minimal or minimum accessible need for a street end to make it just accessible but not improved, right? Which involves just clearing brush, adding signs, maybe having a short trail for things that are super steep and looking at what that would take instead of the in-depth street ends that we will continue to develop, but something that's simple and can be done sort of near term. Let's see. Last thing is, we talked about potential change to our meeting schedule. And one thing that I thought about and talked about with some folks was, what if we had one regular session per month and two study sessions? Being that the study sessions are where a lot of the, the work that we do as a council occurs, that might be a way to reduce things, but not necessarily make things run late at the same time. We'd have one set of public comments instead of two. And the question is, would that still meet the needs of our residents? Something to consider.
That's a good question.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good question for us to, again, take under some advisement and contemplation with Mr. Coughfield and staff, but not a bad suggestion. Thank you. Okay, how about Councilmember Brandstetter?
That, I did participate with the youth council at their organizational team building event. did participate with the youth council at their organizational team building event, to be able to go and do that. Seems, seems to be a group of, of, of a lot of enthusiasm with a, with participation across the classes from, from freshmen through seniors, there's just quite a few folks there, so I think the enthusiasm and for, for this year in the youth council is, is, is pretty positive. I plan to go to the dedication of the new bus stop, and, and be able to do that, and I, and I would note that, you know, part of the funding for these planned to renovate and do both bus stops, they actually came from the Puget Sound Regional Council, and as, as a city, we supported and, and, and urged the Puget Sound Regional Council to, to fund that project as robustly as they could to, to, to get those done, and that, that, that there are some that, that are going on. And my understanding of the new design is that not only do they look aesthetically nice, but that they have a lot of safety features such as lighting and, and, and other things that, that is a stop there that's kind of in the woods just there, being on Walmart is actually something I've been, I've been looking forward to, to be able to go through and, and, and do that. So I think I would just comment on the staff and, and, and Ms. Spears particularly guidances that I I gotta say that the, the process of coming up with the significant revisions or review of the, the comp plan is at this point, it's exceeding my expectations, because in addition to just rewriting things, it is really coming up with a document that is going to be much more readable and understandable. Not just to me, but I think to the general public in terms of going through to do that, and we, we've been living for, you know, twenty years with a, with a comprehensive plan that was written for people whose hobby was reading comprehensive plans. As, as, as opposed for, for a community to read about, about, about where they're going. And I think it'll be a good, once, once we get it done, it'll also be a good jumping off point for us to, as, as we're, as we're approaching our thirtieth year, to beginning to look at our fortieth year vision and getting, getting on as to what, what it's going to look, going to look like. And lastly, my neighborhood, it was our turn to get the chip seal program to run through all of us, and you know, that, that was done, it was rather done seamlessly with this, involved just a week's worth of, of, of things ongoing, of doing this, letting it set, doing something a couple days later, and then, and then and then today they finalized it with all the striping, and, and the folks that I have talked to are all appreciative of it, they just hope that it lightens a little bit, because, you know, originally goes down, it's all, all very black, and they, and, and, but, but, but I, I tell them, go look at the ones that were done last year, and they, they so I think that's a program that is you know, you know, worthwhile, and it's, it's also one that's very visible, that the people in the neighborhoods from across the city, you know, over the past six years have seen actual progress, and it contrasts significantly with some other communities in our, in our region that pay attention to their arterials, but not much attention to their to, to their neighborhood streets, and I, I think it serves us well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey? You're fine? Isn't that for the four of us to decide?
I do not have any comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I too enjoyed the youth council team building program, and I have to say that my table did win the tallest towel.
Very nice.
It was heavily popped, but it was fun, the spaghetti didn't break because we taped it together. So that was fun, and, and this youth are really excited about this year being involved with the council, so we kept to make them feel special when they come in. Dessert on the driveway, I do a plan to attend that on Thursday. The transit, I, I, if I have a chance to, I'll go by just to say hello to Congresswoman Strickland, because I'm speaking at Copart Rotary at twelve o'clock on LMCC, so it starts at twelve, so I may be able to stop by and just say hello, and that's it.
Very good, thank you. Just quick comments from me. I will attend the Pierce Transit event as your representative of the Pierce Transit Commission and vice chair of the commission, so I'll, I'll speak at that event. The Bus Shelter project was one that was promulgated in part by the members of CTAG, which is the Community Transit Agency Group, they're kind of a local group of appointed members of the public that provide feedback on all things transit, and they talked about the need to do something to make ridership more welcoming, safer, and certainly make the shelter experience less expensive for the transit agency, because with the big panels of glass, they found that people were scraping those things, and the cost of replacing the glass panels was becoming prohibitive, and so this design accomplishes all those attributes that CTAG suggested and staff suggested we look at, which is to have a design that's easier to maintain, a design that's safe, and a design that's welcoming and well-lit, and they're using solar panels, I think, as part of that too. So anyway, I look forward to seeing that. But you are correct that we have many partners to thank for the funding, and it'll be good for the community. Last thing I have, in addition to going hopefully to the events at the market for the LPD twentieth anniversary at the farmer's market there, last thing is you know, we passed our public camping ordinance, other cities are doing the same. Don't be surprised if you start to hear about legal challenges coming down the pike. There are organizations that are getting together to challenge some of these ordinances, it sounds like even there may be some legislative action at the state level coming up this next session that may obviate some of the impact of the local ordinances, again, kind of striking a little bit of hand at local control, so more to follow on that, but I decided to let you know. At this time, the council will recess into executive session for about fifteen minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten sub one sub I to discuss with our legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We are not expected to take action following the executive session other than to adjourn this meeting. So at this time, we will be in recess, and since it's about eight thirty-eight, why don't you give yourselves a few minutes to get a cup of coffee in executive session at eight forty-five? in executive session at 8:45?